The school board meeting will begin in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the school board meeting will begin in one minute.
Good evening and welcome to the May 27th, 2025, meeting of the Marion County School Board. It is now called to order. Mirroring and modeling the way our students begin each day, I ask that we observe a moment of silence at this time. Please join me. Thank you. Reverend Cummings, will you please read the board commitment statement?
Yes, ma'am. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together, we are to work. We are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We'll always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off their electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received to the board clerk no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Good evening, Ms. Gonzalez. Will you call role for us this evening?
Good evening. Dr. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Lori Conrad, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Dr. Sarah James, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Gullett, will you share with us who is going to provide the inspiration and lead us in the pledge this evening?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the board, I am very pleased to do so. Ms. Beck is here, and she has brought some, I can tell you, very talented second graders from the Fordham Early Learning Academy and a special Fox, too, who's well behaved. Very talented second graders, as we saw again last week, but please to introduce Ms. Beck. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Chair Conrad, board members, and Dr. Gullett. I am so happy to be here with you this evening. It is truly my pleasure to come before you, presenting our very first graduating second grade class from Fordham Early Learning. Tonight is a milestone, not just for our students, but it's a dream that began with a very small school that had no name for a little while. It was just called the Early Learning Academy, but a big promise. And our promise was that we were going to love on our students, and we were going to make sure that they knew everything they needed to, to be successful for third grade and beyond. And boy, oh, boy, have we come a long way in a short time. We know the future is bright for all of our students, and I'm deeply grateful to the families who took a chance on us, who believed in the vision before they ever saw the fruit. That leap of faith, that trust, is something that we don't ever take for granted. I also want to take a moment to acknowledge our incredible staff and families. So if our Fordham families and our staff, if you'd please stand for a moment. I think this is just a really nice testament of how we kind of wrap around each other, and it's really the love and commitment that fills our campus daily. At this time, I am so honored to turn the program over to one of our parents, Landis Martinez. She is a dedicated parent to two Fordham students, and she's been with us from the very beginning.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Fordham, to me, has felt like family since the first day that I left my two kids there. It has always just been comforting, and everyone at that school treats your kids like they are their own, from my kids pitching a fit, not wanting to get out of the car, and then just loving on them just like that. It's been such a fun experience watching the students and the school grow to what it is now. And I'm sad that my kids have to leave, but I am so excited for the future of all of them.
Thank you so much, Ms. Martinez. Now, I'd like to turn the program over to our one and only, currently second grade teacher, but will be growing, Mrs. Margajak. She has taught these fantastic students this year. She'd like to present each of the students to you, and she is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening.
Hello. My name is Nikki Margajak, and I have had the privilege of being the one and only second grade teacher here at Fordham Early Learning Academy. It has truly been an absolute wonderful year. I love these kids like they were my own, and if you had the honor of getting to go to our concert last night, you saw me shed many tears because I'm going to miss them so much. I am so proud of every single student that is here and all the students that could not make it here tonight, and it is my honor to introduce to you the first graduating class of Fordham Early Learning Academy. So students, when I say your name, come up, stand, and wave, and then you're just going to stay up there, okay? Caleb Dobbs. Kevin Bostick. Isaiah Santana. Easton Martinez. Ella Sass. Skylynn Watkins. Luca Joakim. Mason Terrell. Ayani Dennison. Okay, let's give a round of applause to these students. Thank you, school board members, for all of your support this year and throughout all of Fordham's journey. We know it's new, but you guys have been there since the beginning, and we can't wait to see how long we are here and how far we go. So at this time, we would like to lead you in the pledge. So everybody, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Mrs. Beck, if you'll wait just a minute, we want to come down and celebrate with you and grab a picture.
Foxes are leaving the building.
They are.
We're going to go off script for just a second. We have one more recognition this evening, and, Dr. Gullett, we want to recognize you. So if you'll hold on just a second.
Oh, that's so sweet.
We... We want to thank you for stepping in and being out...
Don't make me cry.
Being our first appointed superintendent and taking on a lot during a challenging time, and so we wanted to just take this... It's your last public meeting, and so we want to celebrate with you. I want the board to come in and join us and get a group picture.
That's so sweet.
And the faces engraved.
It is.
Oh, is it really?
It's a little hard to read.
Oh, my goodness.
Yes, right? You're welcome. You want to get in front of the sign? Okay.
All right, we will continue on, really with some celebrating. We are going to recognize some donations. So we have $15,000 to Dr. NH Jones from Dr. NH Jones Elementary PTO to be used for student resources. $1,500 to Lake Weir High School from Wings of Faith Fellowship to pay a share of the total cost to General Athletics for a baseball pitching machine for Lake Weir High School baseball program. $1,000 to Vanguard High School from Citizens First Bank to be used for senior scholarships. $1,000 to Forest High School from Citizens First Bank to be used for senior scholarships. Thank you to all of those groups and businesses for supporting our schools. We sure do appreciate it. All right, Dr. Gullett, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I recommend approval of the agenda for the May 27th, 2025, school board meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting with the exception of the following items. D-24.1, D-24.2, D-24.3, and D-24.4 have been placed under discussion regular items, and items C-20.2 and C-17.2 have been pulled and placed under discussion pulled agenda items, as well as item GC-26.1 has been added as a discussion good cause item. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. May I have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
So move.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the April 8th, 2025, board meeting?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. James. Thank you, Board Member Thrower. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the April 17th, 2025 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower and Reverend Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Ms. Gonzalez, please provide the proof of publication for tonight's school board meeting.
The notice for the May 27th, 2025, school board meeting ran in the Ocala Gazette on May 16th, 2025. The proof of publication has been attached in board docs under proof of publication.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Good evening, Attorney Powers. Please explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair. In compliance with Section 286.0114 Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for tonight's speakers who may wish to speak regarding either one of today's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board's clerk no later than 5:40 PM. This evening's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board clerk. And before you begin speaking, please state your name for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. If there are more than five people who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrative staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of the meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students or their families are also strictly prohibited. A speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement or position or sponsorship of the school district. Thank you for your attention to this board's requirements. Madam Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Gonzalez, do we have any speakers this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair. Ms. Norvella Haynes?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Since protocol... Oh, Norvella Haynes, H-A-Y-N-E-S. Since protocol has been established, I'm going to say hello to each of you in your respective seats. Dr. Gullett, I would like to say thank you for coming to Marion County and bringing unity because when you came here, you stepped into the lion's den, but you came here putting our children and families first. While dealing with some inherited issues, I know it couldn't have been easy, but you got us back on track and rebuilt the bridge to the community. I know it isn't... I know it hasn't been a honeymoon, but you did it, and I wish you well in a new chapter of your life. Welcome, Mrs. Brewer. Looking forward to the upcoming year and getting to know you. As I look back over the years within the Marion County Public School System, many decisions have been made without the consideration of staff. I understand you all are leaders, and you have a right to make changes, but it's how you go about it. At Lake Weir Middle School, some of us are in... Oh, you can't hear me? Oh, y'all can't hear me?
That's better.
You hear me now? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm quick. Want me to start over again? Oh, okay. At Lake Weir Middle School, some of us are in a bitter, sweet mood. Why? The decision was made to give Mr. Jacobs an opportunity to go to Lake Weir High. We can't be upset about that, but we are upset about how it was done. You all made a decision, and it took you about two weeks to announce it to the staff, leaving us in the dark. But I want you to know, there were many leaks. Personally, me, myself, and I received approximately 10 calls telling me my principal was going to the high school, and I responded to the first caller, "You're lying because Mr. Jacobs would have told us." And personally, after receiving that call, phone call, I went to Mr. Jacobs and personally asked him, and his response was, "I don't know anything about it." Finding out later, he was told not to say anything. Can you imagine what predicament that put him in, not being able to be upfront with his staff? And can you imagine how we felt when the official word was released two weeks later? You all sit up there and talk about transparency. This is not transparency. I'm going to give you an example of this situation as I see it. If you have a husband or wife and you think everything is going fine, then you get a call saying, "Girl or boy, your husband or wife is getting ready to divorce you," and he or she comes home every day like everything is okay, and two weeks later, a warrant officer serves you your divorce papers. When Mr. Jacobs went to Lake Weir Middle, it was a D school. Mrs. Connet and our area superintendent, Mr. Jacobs and his team worked hard, and one year, Lake Weir was a C. Now, you have snatched both of our top leaders that led the troops out of the forest successfully. To me, this seems to be a pattern with the Marion County Public School System. You have failing schools. You put someone there to clean up the mess that someone else left. Then, when they clean up the mess, then they are moved on. As of today, we have no clue who our next leader is going to be. Do you think this is fair or transparent? Hopefully, this is a learning lesson. Thank you.
Anthony Hartwell Brown?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
My last name, Brown, B-R-O-W-N. First, I want to thank you. You have not met me, and I have not met you, but my grandfather said that you should always give credit where credit is due, and I want to thank you for the outstanding administrators you have put in front of me at Lake Weir High School and at Lake Weir Middle School in my time in Florida. They have been exceptional, student-centered, loving, and I consider every single one of them friends. So thank you. With that being said, I also trust that our new leader will follow that mold. I just don't know any better because you've done so well with me. My concern, as expressed eloquently by Ms. Norvella, mainly has to do with the concern of transparency. I work with eighth-grade students with disabilities. I'm a little OCD. What that creates is a situation where I tend to perseverate over issues. Issue of fairness comes into play. This is just Tony. My concern, as Tony, that stakeholders in other areas were kept in the loop when our stakeholders were not. Whether that was by design, whether that was by accident, it is not fair from my perspective. The lack of information, even something as simple as a statement as to the process, was never given. That's dangerous in a business, and education is a business because your employees don't know what's going on. It creates anxiety. It creates stress. I understand that there are wheels that are moving that we do not understand, and we don't need to understand. But from my humble perspective and my OCD, at worst, excuse me, at best, it is simply an oversight. At worst, it's blatant disrespect to a group of stakeholders who have worked tirelessly to love on these kids and bring them from a point of despair to a point of success with everything continuing to trend forward and up. So again, I want to thank you for what you have done for me, for reinvigorating my career after 30-plus years in another state. Thank you for putting those people in my path. Please put someone else on my path. I think, and I only speak for myself, God has put me here for a reason, and I trust that God is leading you in that same way. But ladies and gentlemen, transparency is the key. Information is the key, and when you exclude one set of stakeholders, it can create problems. But I'm just an eighth-grade student with disabilities teacher. So I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your concerted efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Tyler Stefan Walker?
My name is Tyler Walker from Lake Weir Middle School. That's W-A-L-K-E-R.
We can't hear you.
Oh, my name is Tyler Walker. I'm also from Lake Weir Middle School, and that's W-A-L-K-E-R. Thank you, guys, for hearing us out today and allowing us to come and speak our minds towards the transparency issue that we feel is going on at Lake Weir at the moment. I'm in agreement with Mr. Brown and with Ms. Haynes that a lot of us started the position when I first joined at Lake Weir Middle School two years ago. It was a breath of fresh air to have Mr. Jacobs there, and his presence and his experience really brought a lot to the table and was one of the reasons that I continue working at Lake Weir Middle School. I remember a conversation I had with Mr. Jacobs recently where he was one of the reasons that I continue to stay at Lake Weir Middle School. And one of the unfortunate reasons... Unfortunately, one of those reasons is going away, and I wish we would have had some foresight or some little bit of information beforehand so that we could know what was coming down the line, that we could be prepared, just trying to make sure that we know what's going on. It's not fun to be the last to know, and so it would be excellent if in the future we could have more transparency. Thank you. I think this thing's kind of falling.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
That is all for tonight.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving into a public hearing. I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the board regarding... who wishes to address the board regarding any of the nine titles for the nine courses recommended for adoption this evening, and that will be, that we will be voting on separately? Seeing none. Oh, Dr. Gullett, I'm sorry. We're flipping pages here, so I mistakenly flipped back to where we were. Dr. Gullett, do you have some information to share with us on this item?
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. Instructional materials are adopted according to a process defined in State Statute 1006.28 as well as Board Policy 2521. Nine titles for nine courses are being recommended tonight for adoption. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. May I have a motion to approve the public hearing for the 2024-2025 adoption of instructional materials for kindergarten ELA intervention materials? May I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Thank you, Board Member Thrower. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the public hearing for the 2024-2025 adoption of instructional materials for first-grade ELA intervention materials? May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Dr. James. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the public hearing for the 2024-2025 adoption of instructional material for second-grade ELA intervention materials? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the public hearing for the 2024-2025 adoption of instructional materials for third-grade ELA intervention materials? May I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the public hearing for the 2024-2025 adoption of instructional materials for kindergarten math intervention materials? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower.
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the public hearing for the 2024-2025 adoption of instructional materials for first-grade math interventions? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. May I have a second? Thank you, Board Member Throwers. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the public hearing for the 2024-2025 adoption of instructional materials for second-grade intervention materials? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the public hearing for the 2024-2025 adoption of instructional materials for the third-grade intervention materials?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the public hearing for the 2024-2025 adoption of instructional materials for fourth-grade math intervention materials? May I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Thank you, Board Member Thrower. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Thank you, Board. That was a lot of intervention materials. The school district used a construction management delivery method including a guaranteed maximum price to perform construction work on the following projects to allow the district to purchase materials through the owner-direct purchase process to save sales tax. The construction manager needs to return the funds to the owner via a deductive change order. The superintendent has signed and approved the change orders. Per Board Policy 6345, the superintendent is authorized to approve and execute any construction contract change order that will increase the construction contract by $25,000 or less or that will decrease the construction contract amount, provided that approval will be, in her judgment, in the best interest of the board. Such change orders will be binding upon execution by the superintendent. The superintendent shall report each change order that she approved to the board at the board meeting that follows her approval. The superintendent's approval of the change orders will be entered in the official minutes of the school board meeting. Item 9.1, Construction of a Security Fencing System at Westport High School, Change Order Number One, Work Authorization Number 14, Project 23-131. The sales tax savings is $29,000... Excuse me, $29,852.11. Item 9.2, Guaranteed Maximum Price for District-Wide Hydro pneumatic Tanks Replacement, Change Order Number One, Work Authorization Number Five, Project 25-110. The sales tax saving is $6,230.10. Board, this concludes the informational items for today's meeting. May I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items C11.1 through C21.1, with the exception of Items D24.1, D24.2, D24.3, and D24.4 that have been placed under discussion, Regular Agenda Items, and Items C20.2 and C17.2 that have been pulled and placed under discussion, Pulled Items. The Item GC26.1 that has been added as Discussion for Good Cause Item. May I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. So, motion passes four-one. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge the board members have received the Alternative Placement List for Students Through May 8, 2025. Ms. Gonzalez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD25-278E, JD25-288, JD25-289, JD25-290, JD25-293, with off-campus virtual learning for the remainder of the 2024-2025 and the entire 2025-2026 school year? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. James. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of students JD25-280E, JD25-281, JD25-282, JD25-285, for the remainder of the 2024-2025 school year and the entire 2025-2026 school year? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. James. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Moving on to Discussion, Regular Agenda Items, may I have a motion to request to increase the expenditure for the North Florida Buying Group for main food and supply items for the USDA commodity processing via the Alachua County Public Schools RFP 23-24? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. Dr. Gullett, you have some information you'd like to share with us regarding this item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do briefly board the cost for this item. The request is $1.4 million, which is a big item. And Ms. Belcher is here to provide some additional context, but essentially, we're looking at the two additional schools coming on board, the elementary schools as well as summer school and the upcoming school year and the needs for food services. Ms. Belcher will provide some more context. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Conrad, Vice Chair Cummings, Board Members, and Dr. Gullett. Food and Nutrition Services is requesting an increase in the expenditure for the North Florida Buying Group with Gordon Food Service as the supporting vendor from $12.5 million to $12.9 million for the remainder of the 24-25 fiscal school year due to higher food quality and increased participation in the National School Lunch Program. The additional $4,000 will cover food and supply items for the academic year and the summer feeding program. In addition, the proposal seeks to raise the expenditure for the 25-26 school year to $13.9 million to accommodate the opening of the two new elementary schools. The contract runs from July 1, 2023, to June 30, 2026, with approximately $10.7 million already encumbered at the time of submission. So approving this request will enable us to purchase food for the remainder of this school year, the summer feeding program, and the school year ahead. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Board, do you have any questions? Yes, Dr. James?
I just want to, I heard you say 4,000, but I know you meant 400.
Yes, 400. Thank you.
There's just a few more zeros, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear in case anyone was only listening.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Seeing none, Board, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the Sourcewell Contract 120122 MBS, Unified Communication and Contact Center Solutions? May I have a motion? Thank you, Reverend Cummings. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower. Dr. Gullett, you have some information for us regarding this item?
Indeed, I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. So the cost for this request is $500,000. We are looking for the new phone systems to be installed at our two elementary schools coming on board this fall, following a pattern here, and the utilization for other schools that needed as well. But Mr. Ben Vinuti is here to provide some additional details. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Conrad, Superintendent Gullett, and Board Members. We're requesting approval to utilize the Sourcewell Contract 120122 MBS, which pertains to Unified Communication and Contact Center Solutions. The purpose of this request is to establish a scalable, reliable communications infrastructure that will support both our new schools' facilities and necessary upgrades across schools and departments throughout the district. This contract, if approved, will provide access to essential telecommunications systems. The contract is being fulfilled through Mitel Business Systems, headquartered in Mesa, Arizona, and will be serviced locally by Vertex Consulting, located here in Ocala, Florida. The term of the Sourcewell contract runs from June 20, 2023, through March 8, 2027. The estimated financial impact is approximately $500,000 per year. It's important to note that as of date of this agenda submission, no funds have been expended using this contract with this vendor during this current fiscal year. Today, we're just simply requesting approval to utilize this competitively-solicited cooperative contract for the remainder of the term, as well as any extension periods that may be offered through Sourcewell. This will ensure procurement compliance while enabling our district to deploy modern communication solutions in a cost-effective and timely manner. Thank you for your considerations.
Thank you, Mr. Ben Vinuti. Board, any questions or concerns? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Thank you, Mr. Ben Vinuti. May I have a motion to approve the Compensation Amendment Number Three to the Construction Management Contract Guaranteed Maximum Price for Buildings One through Four Interior Finishes, Building Six through Eleven, and Courtyards Related to Construction of New High School CCC, Project 24-105? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Dr. Gullett, you have some information for us on this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And actually, I think the title says it all. The cost for this item and for the public is approximately $29.7 million. It's a big project, as you know, with the new high school CCC underway. Ms. Usher is here to provide some additional details to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Good evening, Board Chair, Board Members. This is the third GMP for the new high school CCC. As Dr. Gullett said, it's for $29 million, $29.7 million approximately. We are currently within the budgeted amount that the board approved for this project. This is for the building interiors for Building One through Four. Those are the buildings up front, and the courtyards and locker rooms. There'll be one more GMP coming to you, and hopefully, we can use sales tax money, savings, and other savings from the elementary school to fund that.
Thank you, Ms. Usher. Board, any questions?
Chair, I'll be recusing myself from this item.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Yes, Dr. James?
Yes, I would like to just be, it doesn't have to be today, but maybe an updated prospective timeline of when we start school in August of 2026? What buildings will be, we are fully intending on moving forward with High School CCC opening for August of 26?
That's correct.
So, understanding that some of the substantial completion dates in this are not aligned with an August date, at sometime in the near future, could the board please receive an updated, maybe timeline? I know previous work sessions, we've received kind of a graphic of sorts of an overlay, this much will be done then. And so, if there's a way we could receive some kind of update, as I know there's been a moving target, so that when the community asks what they can be expecting to see, we will be able to effectively articulate that.
Certainly, Dr. James. The only thing, the completion date for the auditorium is October 26, but everything else should be ready for the August 2026 school year. But I will give you an updated timeline.
So all of the athletic fields as well?
I'm not certain about the fields. The buildings will be ready except for the auditorium. With the fields, I'll have to give you an update on that.
Yeah. For football, obvious, you know, those questions that the community has. Their child's getting rezoned. They play football. So are they going to get to play football on their, those are just questions we're getting. So if sometime this summer we could get that update, that'd be great.
Will do.
Thank you, Dr. James. Any further discussion? Questions from the board? All right. Thank you, Ms. Usher. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes four-zero with one recusal by Dr. Campbell. May I have a motion to approve the Guaranteed Maximum Price for Osceola Middle School Building Improvements, Building One, Project 25-115? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. Dr. Gullett, you have some information on this item for us?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Ms. Usher remains close by. She's coming back to the podium. So this is another big item. The cost for improvement at Osceola Middle School is approximately $3.8 million for that work, and Ms. Usher is going to provide additional details. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Yes, the GMP for the Osceola Middle School Building One improvements is $3.8 million. At the last board meeting, you approved $500,000 as an early procurement package. So the total GMP is $4.3 million. They have given me a substantial completion date of August 7, 2025, for all the interior work to be completed by then and the exterior work going into November of 2025. As requested at the last board meeting, I will provide regular updates on this project to you.
Thank you, Ms. Usher. Board, any questions or concerns? Just one, Dr. James?
My only request is that August 7 is after teachers return to work. So if there is going to be limitations for teachers getting into their workspace, I'd like to ensure that we're having communications with the union and making sure that we're providing an applicable and appropriate work condition, seeing as I believe teachers return to work Monday of that week, and this completion date is Thursday, so...
Definitely, Dr. James. We're already talking about that and looking into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. James. Yes, Board Member Thrower?
Thank you. Just in looking through the attachments and the letter to Ms. Boombach, it says on page one that unknown existing conditions may affect these scheduled dates. And we're talking now a $4.3 million project. I just find it interesting that we are apparently going to find the money to shore up Osceola Middle School when it was being proposed that we close Pheasant Inn for needing so much work in the future. And I just want to bring it up to the board again that I would like it as an agendized item in a work session sooner than later to talk about... would like it as an agendized item in a work session sooner than later, to talk about both of these schools, talk about a resolution for the pure reason of if I think that we, as a board, make a commitment to protect both of these schools in perpetuity, then we can start encouraging our grants department to look for grants, we can encourage the SAC committees to look for grants, so that we can preserve these schools in a more fiscally responsible way, and from my understanding and background, when you're working in conditions like these, I assume maybe all of you did take the tour that Osceola offered and got a chance to see what's at stake here. I would be very pleasantly surprised if this work manages to be done on time, just because of no fault, I know these folks that are on top to do this, have been doing this kind of work for years, but just the nature of the building, you don't really know what you're getting into till your elbows deep. So I would encourage any families to be prepared, and teachers and staff, to be prepared, you know, for disruptions. You know, we had a high school that had plywood over the windows for quite a few months, when inside that high school, there's been classrooms with no windows for decades, so I think that if you just let people know ahead of time what to possibly expect, it helps manage their expectations. And I know because of this accelerated timeline, there, I received a voicemail, and there was some other email communications about not chasing ODP for this project, is that still the case?
Board Member Thrower, we will try to get every penny back for the school district, but because of the tight timeframe, and we might not be able to do that, but we will try. In this case, we're not buying equipment, so the ODP would be getting back would be from carpeting, or sheet rock, or stuff like that. It won't be substantial, but we will try to. You all asked to be transparent, so I'm transparent, that if we might not be able to get all our ODP back, but I believe to you, the scheduling and getting the school completed for next semester is more than important, more than getting, and if it was a substantial amount, I agree, but it should not be, because we're not buying equipment. With the air handlers, we're just going to clean those and remediate and put them back in.
Yes, ma'am, and I did receive that information, and I also sat here for many, many minutes, many, many meetings, and heard a lot about ODP and why it was so important, and I heard that directly from the contractors as well, that we were not doing a good enough job, and it came loud and clear from the same company that is asking us to forgive it on this one. So in the spirit of transparency, and in the spirit of making sure that every penny counts, I just think that, you know, what's sauce for the gander is sauce for the goose, and that there are circumstances, including in the past, where it made more sense to keep moving with the project because that's what's best for kids, but others got crucified on that, and that, in my mind, was not fair. So if we're going to be doing this, then we need to make sure that it is very public for everyone, and also, again, manage the expectations that when you're getting into projects like this, it's really difficult to have a very hard and fast timeline, and I would encourage the folks associated with Osceola to expect some disruptions, you know? That's the nature of construction, so there's no point sugarcoating it, it is what it is, and I'm ready to move forward.
And I promise I will update you regularly and stay on top of the contractor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower, and I just want to add that when Ms. Usher joined us, that our first meeting, I shared with her, communication in the past had been challenging, to say the least, and so, Ms. Usher, I just want to say publicly, thank you, I feel like you've made a concerted effort to communicate with the board when things don't go as exactly how we hoped they would go, and that happens a lot in construction, and so thank you for working hard to communicate, not just with me as the board chair, but with the board in general, so thank you for that. Are there any further questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Ms. Usher. Moving on to discussion, pulled agenda items, may I have a motion to approve the job description for Crisis Response Coordinator? One point seven seven, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. James, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Dr. Campbell, I understand you pulled this item, and you'd like to have further discussion.
Yes, Chair, thank you. Because this job is going to now be moving into the communication function, there currently isn't anywhere necessarily in the job description that indicates why, and so Bullet Seven currently says assist schools in developing effective crisis management plans. In speaking with the team, and Dr. Brewer as well, my recommendation, and she concurs, is to change that seventh bullet to read assist schools in developing effective crisis management and communication plans, because there is a significant difference in a crisis management plan and the crisis communication plan that follows it. There are significant differences, and so I believe that will be the responsibility of this coordinator. That's my recommendation.
Thank you. Anything else from the board?
Madam Chair, I understand that they're talking about moving this one to Communications, but I'm not sure if this position even needs to be moved under Communications, looking at the job description.
I'm sorry, we already approved that in the consent agenda tonight, that it is moving.
I understand that, I understand.
There's other things in consent agenda, why I voted against it.
I understand that, but again, I think this may need to be reconsidered at some point, and I will be bringing it back for us to look at it again.
I can't hear you. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I will be bringing this back, because there's some serious issues concerning this one being under Communications and not being, sitting on the safe schools. This is more of a, I know you're trying to make it a civilian position, but it's really not a civilian position. It's a position that has a lot of interaction with law enforcement and federal agencies and of the such, so I just wanted to, you know, it's going to be coming back.
Within the context of the same meeting, if there has been an item that went under consent and was voted on, and the board would like to offer a motion for reconsideration within the context of the same meeting, that is a viable alternative if you should choose to do so. So if there is an item which falls in consent, that board members obviously have the right to pull an item in advance, however, if it falls in consent, it gets voted on, then additional information comes forward within the same meeting. If you would like to offer a motion for reconsideration, that can be done suis fonte, in other words, just right off the cuff, if you so choose.
I would like to offer a motion for reconsideration.
I can't hear him, I'm sorry.
Do you like to do that?
Okay. So that item that we voted on, that, I'm just looking.
Administrative Personnel Packet for twenty-four, twenty-five, is that what you're talking about, Reverend Cummings?
Yes.
Can you give me a number? Yeah, it's C nineteen point one, I believe. No, it's not that one. C.
It's the Staffing Plan Changes, it's not, nineteen point two is one I would like to revisit, but it's a change to the staffing plan.
Oh, you're right.
Just looking for it.
Is it nineteen point?
Uh, twenty point one, maybe? Twenty point one.
Twenty point one is Amendment to the Central Office Staffing Plan?
Yes, the Safe Schools Attachment. Is that what you're speaking about, Reverend Cummings?
Mm-hmm. I'm looking at that attachment, just to verify that's the one you're looking for.
Yes, the Emergency Management.
Yeah, it's twenty point one, where we had the changes showing it, the removal of the position from safe schools and into public relations, that was item twenty point one.
Right.
All right, so if Reverend Cummings has been recognized by the chair, he can make that motion, then if the motion is seconded, and the board votes to reconsider that particular item, then with the board chair's permission, we may vote on that item.
Madam Chair, I want to, I would love for us to reconsider this, this item.
You gotta speak up, I can't, I can't hear him.
I would love for us to reconsider this item as, what was it, twenty point one?
Twenty point one.
Motion to reconsider, item twenty point one has been made.
Okay, all right, motion by Reverend Cummings. And a second by Dr. Campbell. Is there any further discussion by other board members? Dr. Campbell, do you want to share?
I still believe that on the job description, when we vote on that, we'll have to make the vote on what we just paid the motion on, but when we get to the item on Crisis Response Coordinator, I still believe it needs to have the word Communication Plan in it, because we do need someone to develop the Crisis Communication Plan.
First, just motion to reconsider, hasn't been voted on, the motion to reconsider?
Understood. It has not been voted on.
Then we go into discussion on that.
Okay, so.
So are we reconsidering, is what's on the table right now?
Okay.
Motion to reconsider.
All right.
Then a motion reconsider in a second, the board votes on that.
Then we'll go back to the item we.
And then we go to the item.
Correct. All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes three, two.
Now, opening item twenty point one, Amendment to the Central Office Staffing Plan for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought the motion we just voted on was that one.
Twenty point one.
Twenty point one.
It was a, it was a motion to reopen.
To reopen.
Now we have to vote separately on it.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you for the procedural.
Should we finish the vote on the, we have, we have a motion and a second on the table for the job description?
We do.
Which did not get closed.
That would have been automatically tabled by the pending motion, so.
And we'll need to make an additional amendment to it.
If you.
Now that we've just, yes, if we pass.
Now that we reopen it.
Now that we've reopened, yes.
So, Dr. Campbell.
So with item twenty point one, I believe the motion is to keep the position of Crisis Response Coordinator in safe schools and not in public relations, however, also twenty point one includes the addition of a Chief Financial Officer, which I do not believe needs to be a part of the, I think that needs to go ahead and move forward, but I believe the request of Reverend Cummings, and he may want to make the motion on that, is to keep that position in safe schools and not move it to public relations.
That's correct. My motion, again, would be that the emergency, was it, Emergency Management?
Crisis Response.
Crisis Response. Not be moved to Communications, there needs to be language added about the Communications part, but it needs to remain on the safe schools due to the probability of it being, dealing with law enforcement, different federal agencies, and it's not a civilian position, it should be a position that has the, that can speak the language.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, second by Dr. Campbell, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion passes three, two. Okay.
For Chair, for clarity, I think, can we just, so the, what we just approved, so that everyone understands, is that the Crisis Management Position will remain under.
Safe Schools.
Safe Schools.
Correct.
Okay. So back to the job description then?
Twenty-five point one.
All right.
So the way the job description reads, still, first of all, the one of the change that will need to be made is who it reports to, so that's at the top, because currently, the job description as presented says it reports to the Director of Public Relations, so that will need to refer, revert back to the Safe Schools Director. I still believe that the seventh bullet does need to say assist schools in developing effective crisis management and communication plans.
I agree.
That was going to be my primary change to this, I still think even a law enforcement person needs to have that capability, and I don't know, Reverend Cummings, if you would recommend some kind of change to the position qualifications, because there isn't anything currently represented that references law enforcement.
Right, I'm looking at the qualifications, wait a minute, I lost my highlight on it. It does need to add that communications piece of the Communication Plan, where is it?
Well, it says certifications in the National Incident Management System, the NIMS, including Incident Command System, ICS, and all hazards position-specific AHPS courses.
Right. Those should still remain. I think it says experienced minimum, three years of verified successful experience related to Emergency Management and or equivalent combination of education and training. That needs to remain. The bachelor's degree from a credit educational institution, I'm not sure about that piece, because a lot of law enforcement may not have the bachelor's degree, but if they have the qualifying experience, they're just as capable as someone with a bachelor's degree.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is we're not ready to approve this job description.
I think, yeah.
Is everybody comfortable, we go ahead and call the vote?
Well, I just want to offer, I think the reason the job, I know the reason the job description is on tonight's agenda is because they need to hire the job, so that we can have the person properly prepared for hurricane season, which we are promptly entering, and this person is a critical component to our response in emergency management situations, which can be a plethora, but the primary emergency management response we have in this district is hurricane and shelter relief. So delaying this two more weeks on a board agenda, and then having to post for five days, and then interview, we're going to be in the heart of hurricane season before we even hire this person. And so I don't want to speak on behalf of Dr. Brewer, but I believe the way of work for this to be on tonight's agenda is so that we can get it approved. So Attorney Powers or in Chair Conrad, I would recommend if the board can come to consensus on the changes in the job description, can we go ahead and have those minor changes taken care of and get this approved?
Yes, I would just ask for clear instruction on exactly what changes need, that the board wants to be made, and then the board chair can approve.
So I'm a little uncomfortable with that, you know, this goes, this goes through a lot of work before it gets to us, and so I don't know if this is permitted, but I would like to say, if the board would approve this, can it come back before us to be updated? Like, can we approve this job description so they can begin hiring, they update, they make these changes, which.
I don't want to speak out of turn, because this is not my area of expertise, I will tell you, however, that that may affect whom it is, that who is going to be doing the interviewing, what departments, everything else, because.
Ms. Marant, would you mind coming forward, please?
Sure. The education piece is important, because we, if we decide bachelor's degree or relevant law enforcement experience, you know, to capture.
Right.
The fact that it may not be necessary to have a bachelor's degree with other relevant experience, that could be a quick fix.
Right.
Thank you, Ms. Usher.
What's the, I'm sorry, because we can hear bits and pieces.
Right.
So what is your.
There are some things, some pieces of this job description that different board members have concerns with, so my question is, if we approved the job description as is tonight, so that hiring could, the hiring process could begin, can board members with concerns get with you on these updates and that the update of the job description come back before us? Like, is there any rule about how long there has to be between updates?
So there's no rule about how long, and yes, that can happen. My concern from an HR perspective is if we recruit someone based on meeting these qualifications, and then you make changes, and then they no longer qualify, then we have another issue. What are, what are your concerns, or what is it that you are considering changing?
We'll start again with Reverend Cummings.
We're considering the education piece, where it talks about the bachelor's degree.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
How about we just take it from the top, because we were talking about having it moved from Director of Public Relations in terms of reporting, back to Safe Schools Department, Director of Safe Schools, right?
So the very first thing would be reports too.
Right, that's, we can.
Okay.
And then.
And the seventh bullet.
Dr. Campbell had the seventh bullet.
And Communication.
Mm-hmm. Crisis Management.
I captured that.
And then the one that I had raised was if it, it may or may not be necessary to have a bachelor's degree in lieu of other related experience.
So I would just like to say, this is an administrative-level position, and all of our administrative-level positions do require a bachelor's degree, so my, that would be my HR recommendation, is that for this administrative position, require a bachelor's degree. And when we had the Emergency Coordinator before, it required a bachelor's degree as well.
So can you add or related, related experience?
No.
I mean, that's the direction of the board, but again, my recommendation would be that it requires a bachelor's degree, but again, you all let me know, but my recommendation would be. But again, you all let me know, but my recommendation would be it required the bachelor's degree at a minimum.
Reverend... Chair, may I ask?
Yes.
Reverend Cummings, it does say three years of experience in law enforcement. I'm trying to find the exact verbiage.
Related to emergency management.
It just says related to emergency management.
Related to emergency management, right. So, and I guess I said law enforcement, but I was thinking they all work together.
Do you want to maybe expand on the related experience?
Related experience.
And even the degrees? I'm sorry if we're having open discussion for just a moment. So I concur that the bachelor's degree, because of the salary range that this one is, as well as it being on the administrative salary schedule, bachelor's degree needs to be required. I'm not sure... Certain if we want to increase logistics and/or government management, if there's a different degree offering that we also wanted to say, because there is a section there on education that says these degrees are encouraged. So maybe there is another... I'm not sure what law enforcement degree would... What that is. That's not my expertise. But then also in the experience category, where it says related to emergency management, we could say emergency management, comma, law enforcement, comma, and/or equivalent combination of education.
I can go with that. I can go with that.
So I'm not sure what other degree offering there would be that beyond logistics and government management.
I mean, there's varied... You know, organizational management could fall under there. There's a lot of different ones that could fall under that.
We can... And the way it's worded, they don't have to have the bachelor's degree in logistics or government management. That's what's preferred. So if they have organizational management or something else, we would still accept that as long as they have a bachelor's degree.
Okay.
But I'll add organizational management as another, like, example that's encouraged. And then in the experience, we'll add related to emergency management, comma, law enforcement, and/or equivalent combination of education and training.
Okay. I'm good with that.
So now your motion and vote would be as amended or as orally amended?
Sure. And I think I may have been the motion on that. I'm not sure originally. But, okay, make a motion on this.
Go ahead.
As amended. All the things we just said, as amended.
Second.
Okay. We have an amended motion by Dr. Campbell and a second by Reverend Cummings. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes five, zero. Thank you, Ms. Morant.
Thank you.
For coming up impromptu and helping us.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, there was a mention of another item that... So I think...
It's what we were in. It was in the consent agenda. If we can do it now or I can do it during board comments, but we did have some members from our school community come up this evening and address item 19.2. That is the change of positions for Lake Weir High and Lake Weir Middle, and I voted against the consent agenda because I didn't believe we had an ample opportunity to address their concerns, and I respect those folks that came and represented their community well and appreciate the opportunity to have public discussion about it if the board wants to. So I make a motion that we reconsider item 19.2, pulling it out of consent and have a separate vote.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Dr. Campbell, an amended motion by Dr. Campbell, and a second by Reverend Cummings. Any further discussion?
I mean...
Just to get it out.
Just to get it out.
This is just to pull it out? Okay.
Okay. We call now for the vote?
Just call the vote with no other...
Call the vote.
Get it out.
Pull it out. Okay. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
All right.
Sorry, I'm not doing a good job leading you here.
No, that's okay. So motion passes four, one. All right, now...
That's just to pull it.
Now call item 19.2.
19.2. Which I have 14 papers here.
Titled.
Administrative Personnel.
Administrative Personnel.
Give me just a second.
Item 19.2, Administrative Personnel Items 2025-2026 Fiscal Year.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
And...
So...
You would request a motion?
May I have a motion to amend? We're amending this. We're gonna... We just want, what, to discuss it?
A motion to bring to the table, then to second, and then discuss.
Okay. May I have a motion to bring item 19.2, Human Resources, Employment Services, Administrative Personnel Items 2025-2026 School Year in for discussion?
So move.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Second.
Second by Board Member Campbell.
Oh, sorry. I didn't hear you, Board Member Campbell. I was wondering. Okay. Open for discussion.
We have to vote.
No. You are...
You are.
The item is now open.
Perfect.
It has been in discussion all along.
Not in discussion.
Reverend Cummings, you read the motion. Would you like to start on this discussion?
No, you can go ahead.
So I completely concur with Mr. McEntire being named High School CCC Principal, so I want to take that off the table, per se, and those both... There are two items represented in this particular vote, but we did hear from many members of the Lake Weir Middle community this evening, and I am interested in hearing from the board if this is a decision that we want to approve this evening to make that move. My understanding is one or the other will become available tomorrow. So if the board voted this evening to leave Mr. Jacobs at Lake Weir Middle School, then the Lake Weir High principal position would be posted, whereas if we vote just as it was in consent this evening, then the Lake Weir Middle principal will be posted effective tomorrow.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Listen, I concur with both of these moves. I agree with both of these moves. Mr. Jacobs going to the high school. I agree with Mr. McEntire going to the new high school. The concern that we got from the community was not about them moving, it was about how it was communicated.
Correct.
That's the issue that was... That was the issue that was addressed. I think the lack of the... From what I heard, the staff felt they got blindsided and that there were leaks, that some kind of way it got out into the community and it put Mr. Jacobs in a bad spot. I think the move is a good move personally because now these kids that he has worked with the past few years get to move with him to the high school, so it's a continuation of the culture that he's built at the middle school. So I'm in agreement, but I think the issue that we need to be addressing is from the community was how it leaked and how they were told and the transparency in of all of that. That's what I heard from the community.
It is, but it... That's not...
But that's not...
Well, voting on. So, I mean, we had three people... I'm just going to share my comment here. We had three people come forward, happy with the leadership that they had. They're sad that their leadership is moving, and they asked that they hope they get leadership that's just as good as what they had. I will say I don't think that positions being leaked is a new problem. I think it's happened many times, probably since when I started teaching 30 years ago. So it's a misfortune that it happens, but it does. Some people can't keep things to themselves, and so that is damaging when our staff finds out and they have... It hasn't been shared. So I just want... I just wanted to add my comments. Board, is there anything else?
Yep.
Yeah. Dr. James?
So, a couple things. It's very... We cannot presume that just because Lake Weir Middle School is getting posted tomorrow that that would mean Lake Weir High School is getting posted tomorrow if we flip-flop this, because that's not necessarily what the interim superintendent or superintendent would do. But what is... I think what I'm concerned about is that we've now reopened a second item tonight, but we're not talking about the contents of the item. It seems like all of us are pretty much in agreement that, I believe, my understanding, and I mentioned this, I believe, in the last time we met, it is not our job to get into the nitty-gritty of personnel items. It's not our job. So we approve the personnel packet by a matter of formality and practice, but it is not our job to make personnel decisions. And the public shares concerns, which I completely agree with, which I intend, it's on my list to address, and comments, then we address it as a board with our employee, or at this time, employees, because we have an interim superintendent and superintendent. But it doesn't change the fact that the personnel packet is the personnel packet, and it's not our job to get in the weeds on the personnel packet. We got multiple emails about, I believe we all did, about another personnel move for an assistant principal. My response to those employees was, I appreciate you sharing your thoughts. Thank you for reaching out. The personnel packet is not my job, and I have forwarded your responses to the interim superintendent and the staff who are making the changes. So that's where I stand on this. I maintain, I believe Mr. Jacobs is going to do a tremendous job, as is Mr. McEntire, and I entrust that we're going to get a really great administrator to come in to Lake Weir Middle School.
And I'd just like to add that those principals are looking forward to doing that... Their next job, their next assignment. Their staff is happy for them. They're just nervous about who's coming in to lead them next school year. And unfortunately, doing things through the school system is a little slow. We have procedures that we have to follow, and so it's not as quick or as fast as some would like.
Madam Chair. And this is what I hear. I agree with both what you just said. The decisions or those personnel decisions don't come from this board. Those recommendations don't come from this board. Those recommendations come from the superintendent to the board, and we either approve them or disapprove them. I know this... How those things got into the community have created angst and anxiety amongst the staff, but those are not... But we were... The board was addressed as we leaked something, and we have to address that piece and say that that's not our... That's not even in our function. Our function is to approve it or disapprove it. And so I'm sure that our superintendent, our interim superintendent is going to work on how those... How transparency is, and making sure that whenever there is going to be moves, those moves are communicated in a proper way. It's unfortunate... It's very unfortunate that it put Mr. Jacobs in a compromising spot, that he couldn't be forthright with his staff, because it shines on his credibility as a leader when he can't say certain things. And I think we just have to do a better job. It was... It wasn't just his position, there's other positions that's out there. We... Lake Weir Middle School staff were just concerned enough to come to the board and say it. So thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Hold on. Board Member Thrower has something she wants to share, Attorney Powers.
I just wanted to share that I heard loud and clear from the folks that spoke tonight that they were thrilled that Mrs. Principal Jacobs is getting this opportunity and that Mr. McEntire is getting this opportunity, and that wasn't the point. The point is, is that when people that are at the highest levels are trusted with very sensitive information that affects the lives and livelihoods of hundreds of people, that it is critical to make sure that the appropriate silence is maintained so that the timing of when staff is informed comes from the right people at the right time for the right reasons. And I've been with this district a really long time, and this particular season of movements, I don't like what I have been hearing and who I've been told they've been getting it from. So I would encourage everyone in high-level positions to consider that information. It has been brought forward in public tonight by the people that are in the trenches and how it is affecting them, and that's where I'm going to leave this.
With that, Attorney Powers, can you give me some direction on what we...
The board chair will now call a vote on item 19.2, Administrative Personnel Item 25-2025-2026 Fiscal Year.
Okay. May I have a motion?
You've already had a motion. You had a second.
So we just have to call the vote. Sorry, sorry, sorry. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes five, zero. I have just one final comment I want to say. The board has quite a bit of time to reach out to staff before we get to this meeting, and I would just encourage board members, if you have a concern, to reach out to the experts in the field to talk through some of these items. If you are concerned about things that are being pushed forward, even though this item really is in the weeds for us, I encourage you to reach out and have those conversations. You know, my personal experience is anytime I call Ms. Morant, she calls me back or texts me and says, I'll get to you as soon as I can. So I just would encourage you, if you have concerns, to reach out to our leaders within the district to help get clarifications or even explanations of why those decisions have been made. With that, we are going to move on to item C-17.2.
Now we're returning to...
Item 25.2.
We were 25.2.
Seventeen.2.
Is that...
She's on the right one.
Yes, I'm sorry. It is C-17.2.
May I have a motion to approve the expenditure increase request for bid 4052 MF Indoor Air Quality Remediation and Asbestos Abatement Term Contract? May I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. Dr. Campbell, I understand you pulled this item and you'd like further discussion?
Yes, Chair. I intend to vote in favor of this, but because it does mention the reason for the increase in funding is due to the environmental challenges at Osceola Middle, and it was recommended in the last board meeting, I know from this board seat, that anything to deal with this Osceola abatement issue would not be in consent, and it would be placed into discussion just for the purpose of transparency. That was the reason for pulling the item.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five, zero. Moving on to discussion with Good Cause. May I have a motion to approve the request for the Second Amendment to Agreement for Purchase and Sale of Real Estate Warehouse? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. May I have a second? Okay.
I have Mr. McGraw here to speak to the board if the board wishes to hear it. If we don't second it, we don't do that. So that's...
Do we have to have a second to have a discussion?
We have to have a second to have a discussion.
Correct. I will... I will read this for the board's purposes. The board has had an opportunity to read the best practice. Essentially, here we had buyer completed his due diligence on the property and would like to renegotiate its purchase price offer. The buyer has indicated the cost of repairs total over $519,000. The buyers will enclose, remove the contingencies for reduction to $2 million. The original listing price was at 1.95, I believe, is what we requested that Mr. McGraw take forward. I have had discussion with Mr. McGraw and put this item here because it would... If the board does not vote to hear, then they have to walk away from it and we relist, board does not vote to hear, then they have to walk away from it and we relist, or we would have a contingency period, wait 10 to 15 days, and perhaps bring it back to the board for consideration. So, that's the stance and status. I have had discussions with Mr. McGraw regarding this exact item, and because there was little time for me to bring additional items for anyone's further notice, all I can indicate to you is that if this is not something that is at least discussed tonight and you voted up or down, then it is something which just drops and we would be unable to, and that's fine, it's within the board's purview. Just want to be clear what the ask is. The ask is essentially for an explanation for the board to vote it up or down.
Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to offer an amended motion for an extension of the due diligence, because I don't think this item is appropriate for this, for this board to vote on at all with a, I don't know, five-hour notice. So, I can offer an amended motion to extend the, what's the appropriate term, due diligence period for 10 days so that it can be properly noticed, and then this item can come back before the board. That's fine with me. But, so if that would be of the purview to get a second, then I'm fine to offer that amended motion.
All right, we have amended motion by Dr. James. May I get a second? Can I pass the gavel to make a second? I second the motion, the amended motion.
Discussion?
All right. Let, just hold on, I, hold on, I'm just making a note of all that's going on this evening. All right. We're going to open this up for a discussion. Attorney Powers, would you like to invite our guest?
Yes, indeed. I have Mr. McGraw here to speak to you, and I will also indicate that as a contingency, because I didn't know which way the board would like to go with this, we've also prepared a Second Amendment to the Agreement for Purchase and Sale of Real Estate, which does take into account exactly what the board just discussed, which would be an additional period, an extension of a period for which we would be able to extend the due diligence period and bring this back to the board later if that's the board's pleasure. So, I'll let Mr. McGraw.
I do have a question before Mr. McGraw begins to speak.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you. Hasn't this due diligence period already been extended once?
It has.
By how many days?
We extended it the first time for a, was it a 30-day period, Mr. McGraw?
We extended it for a 30-day period, that's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
That's correct.
And suddenly, there's, over a holiday weekend, $514,000 of expenses have been identified?
It was identified.
That they want us to vote on tonight?
That was identified for us on Thursday, and of course, as the board is aware, or may not be aware, I've been in federal court on Friday, or been in truancy court on Friday and federal court today. So, I posted this item this morning with the board chair's permission, after convening more talks with Mr. McGraw over the weekend.
And when does this actually run out? Tonight or tomorrow?
Twenty-eighth, tomorrow.
Right.
It's not do or die tonight.
Well, it is, because the board has to vote. It dies today if we don't vote on anything.
And I, if the board's pleasure were to grant an additional, I think it's a 10-day extension is what we, 10 calendar days from May 28th and then bring it back for further discussion, we may do so with a Second Amendment agreement which has been prepared. The board may choose not to do that. I'll let Mr. McGraw further explain after you've, if that satisfies your question.
Thank you, because it does not. We already have extended this by 30 days, and it was as-is, so I think we were gracious to extend it an extra 30 days. They have until tomorrow to decide, take it or leave it, if that's the way the board votes. So, I agree that we have to have a vote tonight, but I just wanted to get this out there in the open and remind everyone on this board how this got started, how the deal was structured, and now what we're being faced with at the 23rd hour, and that doesn't sit right with me. So, now I'm ready to listen, thank you sir.
And I think Mr. McGraw will probably reflect to you, if he's honest, about the fact that my first impressions with being exposed to this as well were very, very similar and very, I was definitely not happy with what I heard. Mr. McGraw does have additional information, which may or may not have an impact on that.
Mr. McGraw, thank you for waiting on us. We're ready to listen and hear what information you have to share with us.
Okay, and first and foremost, thank you guys for having me. I've got Sandin Wheatons here with me as well, who is the real estate agent that we engaged, that we engaged to market the property. And so, he can also fill in any gaps that I may have in explaining the process. But, the way the real estate market works is that if you do have a due diligence period, it's a time for you to make a determination and look at a building to see if it's suitable for your purposes. And during that period, the buyer can terminate at any point whatsoever, or that buyer can ask for a request, specifically in this case, they asked for a reduction of $500,000. And that is a big request coming at you at the last minute, but I don't believe there was any malice or intent, you know, ill intent. We've got a buyer here who's working in the real estate market, and this is a traditional and very usual and customary way to handle a request for a price reduction. I don't think they were looking to say, "Hey, school's almost out, we're going to hammer the board right now at their most weak position, and we're going to really get a great deal." I don't see that being the case. I do want to go back however, and talk about how we first started, when you first engaged me. It was to handle an auction process, and we did that auction process, it was a blind auction, and the bids that we received were a $1.4 million bid, $1.2 million bid, and a $1 million 50, and then a whopper of a bid of $307,000. So, those were the bids that we received and entertained, and then we went back to the group and said, "Hey, listen, these aren't going to work for us, please increase your bid if you'd like a chance to purchase this building," and all parties declined at that point. And so, then we went to the drawing board and we just determined we would engage local real estate agents who knew the market, and that's where Sandin came on. And so, Sandin came on and started marketing, and they listed the property, and it was actually at $1,995 was the list price. Jeremy, I think I sent you an email that was incorrect, it was $1,950. It was $1,995. And so, the property was listed, we received two offers on the property, and the two offers on the property were, one greatly above our asking price, which I don't know where this buyer came up with this number, but it was 500,000 above our asking price. And of course, we went with them. And so, now they've gone through the process of looking to see if there's anything, and I don't think it's a bait and switch, it may very well be, I don't know. But nonetheless, if we take their reduction that is being proposed, where they waive all contingencies and are ready to close on June 30th, and their money's hard, so we actually have an addendum that says that, just that, that we will waive all contingencies, that our escrow deposit's hard, that we will deposit an additional $75,000, and we will close on June 30th. They have no outs whatsoever if we sign that document with them, whether that be today or if we postpone it and hold it at a meeting where there's open discussion. And I, my preference would be today, but if we can't do it today, then I would definitely suggest that we go down the route of signing the 10-day extension that allows them to extend their due diligence, meaning if we do the 10-day extension and they want to cancel at day nine, they still get their escrow deposit back. But it at least gives us the ability, and we think we're all traveling in our good faith, that you've said you will buy this for $2 million, we just need time to have a discussion and to properly publicize that discussion and make sure it gets out correctly. So, I think that's really what our options are, is do we go through and make a decision on the $500,000 reduction right now without proper procedures in place possibly and run that risk versus let's go ahead and sign an extension, which I believe the chair has the ability to sign without any further action on the board based on the fact that you did sign that last extension, and I think that was the power granted, so I'm not even sure that has to be voted on. But I will defer to you guys on that 10-day extension for the due diligence, because it doesn't modify or change anything other than extends out their due diligence so they can cancel for 10 more days.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw. And board, my concern was that there wasn't proper notice, and so, even though I'm in support of this, I do want the public to have an opportunity for it to be noticed and come and comment if they so choose. So, board, I offer any other comments?
Well, there's an amended motion on the table, so, yes, I would like to, I mean, I maintain my amended motion, I would like to see the amendment for 10 days or whatever the date range is to extend, so that, I'm in full support of this. This offer, even with the 500,000 reduction, is still above ask. This is the best offer we're ever going to get on this property, and if it had been properly noticed, I would be an automatic yes right now. But, the notification being, I mean, less than a business day is just completely not okay with me. It does not give the public opportunity to come give comment. This is the first thing we've sold, and I can't even, I don't even know, and I don't think we should start down the road of selling property because we have multiple things to sell in the future with, with not doing it the right way. And that's just, that is how I feel about it. So, I maintain my amended motion, and I would love to see at our next board meeting, this item properly publicized, and we get to vote on it and move forward with the same closing date of June 30th.
Mr. McGraw, the only thing I will ask is, as the board considers this, what you and I had prepared was actually for an extension of 10 days. Our next board meeting is actually June 10th. So, unless we set a special board meeting, that would actually be 14 days.
We have a board meeting on June 5th, it is an off-air for discipline, that we have done this before, we can just reopen and...
And the question is, that's prior to an administrative briefing and work session, so is there time to adequately discuss, is there time for us to adequately discuss those issues at that time?
I don't think we have any, I mean, I'm not aware of any issues, I mean, we can obviously have discussion tonight. What I'm saying is, we're off-air, and then we go on-air on June 5th, and we can even agendize it for the work session if needs to be, and then go into the public board meeting afterwards, but we could vote on this June 5th.
Yeah, and what I would offer too, if at all possible, Sandin is here tonight, and he can certainly step up and speak to any other questions you have about the potential buyer, anything else, and maybe we can get that out tonight so that in, on June 5th, we're ready to go.
Let's let the board ask its questions and discuss at this point first.
A couple of things about June 5th. First of all, if we go by practice that this board has always maintained, it will not be a full seven days between the Friday through that Thursday for publication.
It's already public, it's already publicized.
Right, the notice of meeting is published in the paper, the agenda itself doesn't go, it just has to be published for seven days.
Okay.
And that's not publication in the paper.
Again, the purpose of why we are considering giving them an additional due diligence is so the public has the ability to weigh in. That meeting is at 7:00 AM, so are we intending for, the special board meeting is at 7:00 AM, so our intention is to have the public show up for that meeting.
No, that's not, how we've done this before is we do our off-air, after 9:00 AM, we go, and we, we've done this before with other facility items in the last year. We go on-air, we start our work session, we have the work session, we had recessed the board meeting, and then we rejoin the board meeting in the public. And if we go back and ask Ms. Martinez how we, how we published it, I mean, we put, I think I put a time on it even, so that's how we've done it historically.
I'm just wanting to make sure if we're doing this for transparency sake, that we maintain consistent practice. That's how we've done it before, consistency.
Question. Mr. McGraw or Mr. Wheatons, do you think the difference from the date, from the 5th to the, what's the second date, the 12th?
10th.
The 10th, from the 5th to the 10th, is that going to be a deal breaker for the buyer? I know you, I mean, this is a prediction, I'm just asking.
That would request 14 days then, with probably say 15 for the purpose of execution, 15 days instead of 10.
Is it business day?
You know, I don't know that it's an issue for them, but I would, the only risk I think in that is, you know, the first extension was requested by the buyer, that y'all granted, this extension is really requested by the seller, and during that timeframe, you know, they can terminate still for any reason, so I think the shorter that we can keep that, the less chance of them, you know, continuing to do inspections. It basically gives them 14 more days of free look.
Right.
To terminate for any reason. So, even if we get to the, you know, the 13th day and everybody's on-board, you know, they can still terminate. So, I think, you know, in the effort of getting it closed, the shorter we can keep that timeframe, the better.
Okay, thank you for that.
I do think they'll stay on-board. They have, they've done all their inspections, but, you know...
All right, thank you, Mr. Wheatons, I appreciate that.
Any further comment from the board?
Yeah. Board Member Thrower?
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Wheatons. I guess, again, where I am stuck is, you know, folks that have done this type of work as their profession, you know, this warehouse has been around for a while, you know, we all know what it's been used for, we all know it's been inhabited, living, breathing, human beings, all kinds of stuff being stored in there and everything else. I'm just really discontent with, at this final hour, now it's a huge reduction in price, you know, how much more is there, should we be thinking about, should be expected? And I also disagree that this is the best offer we're ever going to get. You know, this land in downtown Ocala, they ain't making any more of it, as the old people say. And with what they're doing downtown, making it walkable, bikeable, beautiful, all kinds of businesses coming in, we're probably going to need another school on that property at some point, because Osceola is completely full. So, I don't feel the same sense of urgency from this seat. That's really where I am with this, and it is frustrating when it is a known, it is a known building, and there's been plenty of opportunity, we've been working on this for a while, you know, to take a good look at it. So, that's just where I am with this board, and as far as the public noticing, according to my recollection, if, when we have made those decisions, we made, we were doing it to make sure that there was full notice. So, and this is our lead-off, first time selling a property like this as a board, so I just, I just am not comfortable with this direction, and I, the offer was great, and I was fully amenable to extending, you know, the due diligence period. And now, here we are again, I think the board just needs to think about that.
Chair?
Yes.
I just want clarification. Board Member Thrower, are you suggesting that you think we shouldn't sell it at all? Because the offer is $600,000 more than our highest offer we received before and over-asked?
I'm suggesting that there was a reason why it was over-asked, and I'm suggesting that it is in a very wonderful area, and I am suggesting that the school that is two blocks over is over-capacity, not open to, you know, open enrollment. So, there's, there's almost as many good reasons, and this is just me, you can disagree, it sounds like you do, but it, with me, it sounds like there is just enough reason to keep the property than there is to sell it. So, I did not appreciate being faced with this today at all, I just didn't. And, and I want to do business and feel really good about everyone that we're dealing with, and I was quite certain that's where we were going, you know, with this. We had come a long way, and so, I'm not going to belabor the point, I'm uncomfortable with it, that's it.
And Chair, I just want to add, this buyer's not out of Ocala, Florida. They're out of New York, I believe, and so, they have spent a lot of money getting contractors here, spent a lot of money making sure that they're going to be able to use the space. No one locally wanted to buy it. You are so right, it has sat there, and we've had it empty for a year, and it has sat there, and the highest bid we got was from probably one of the most productive groups in downtown Ocala, and they offered us 1.4, and that was the best we were going to get. None of the other guys who buy downtown were even interested. So, we, I feel adamant that we're not going to get better than 2 million, and so, either, I do believe that if we do not either do an amendment to the motion and extend it for the, for the 10 business days or 14 calendar days or whatever we make it, so that we can get this properly noticed, or we vote tonight on what is presented, we can consider this dead. And then, sure, it can be another Osceola Middle School, but I don't believe we're in a financial position to do that. So, I have offered an amended motion, there's a second on the table, we should probably vote on that, I guess, Chair.
This last, Reverend Cummings, did you have anything you want to share?
I don't like the fact how, I don't like how this came up, the last minute, I do not like it. I think it was unfair to us to get this hours before a board meeting and then say, "We have to come up with a quick decision on how we're going to do it." To have the price way up and then automatically it comes down 500,000 miles over a holiday weekend, I got concerns, I got concerns. James, I know what you're going to say, but I still got concerns. That's, that's, that's bad business in my opinion, so...
But Reverend Cummings, they provided the information to Attorney Powers on Thursday. So...
Right before holiday.
Well, in my...
We were in a work session.
On Thursday, I got provided the information when I was in the meeting here with you. I went from here to witness interviews in my office.
And we were in court.
Federal court. Then I was in truancy court from 8:30, 9 o'clock AM until 6:00 PM on Friday.
Right.
And then, no way to publish it over the weekend. So, you know, that, there was, there's a reason for the delay, but those reasons are built in to matters of when business hours are, and I worked all weekend, past business hours, but this is, it's difficult to advertise everything and have the discussions we need around this.
Okay.
And to be clear, if we do, if we fail this, I just want to make sure everyone, all the board members are aware, if we fail this, we're done. I mean, you can offer your expert opinion if you'd like, I guess that'd be most appropriate.
Yes, I'd like to if I could. So, I understand like the concern of the timing. In our, in our industry, if there's a re-trade like this, is kind of what they've done, is re-trade the contract, it typically happens at the witching hour unfortunately. The fact they gave us four or five days notice is a day or two more than we normally get. That generally does cause some, you know, fast-paced movement at the end, and being the board, I think it's probably harder for y'all to move fast on it. I don't think it was intentional to line it up before, you know, a holiday weekend. I think the dates just fell like that. They gave us, like, I believe the five days was enough, I think if you can extend it and bring it back, if you're going to sell the property, I think it would be very smart to continue with this contract. You have $100,000 non-refundable with a set closing date, if they terminate for any reason, you get their $100,000... If they terminate for any reason, you get their 100 grand, they're ready to close. So I think that the misunderstanding painfully about y'all being blindsided is maybe just a lot, not understanding of how the industry works. The notice was actually five or six days more than we would normally see. And I can answer any questions y'all have about how that transactional process works, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Wiegens.
Yes. Board member thrower.
Thank you. My question continues to be, what was uncovered in the second 30 days that wasn't covered in the first 30 days? You know, we just had, for anyone that knows who Bret Michaels is, he just flew into the Ocala airport over the weekend to do a gig and then left. So, you know, it's not like people can't fly in and out of Ocala very quickly, easily, and in an enjoyable way. So people that are from outside of Ocala, you know, they see the potential here, and you think of what that property would cost in Brooklyn, you know, they probably feel like they're getting the deal of the century, and I'm sure they probably are, even at the expanded price, which is, you know. So anyway, go ahead.
So your question was the last 30 days. So the second, I'll be honest with you, I've had to open up the building almost every time they've been there. In the last 30 days, I've probably opened it 10 or 15 times between people they had looking at it, as well as all their contractors and subcontractors. The first 30 days, they were not here very much. And that's why when we did that first 30-day extension, I was actually pushing for some more contingencies rather than just extensions, and the board granted the full extension. In my honest opinion, they really waited till the second 30 days to do most of their work. Now, they're not asking you though, Mr. Thrower, for another 14 days. We have an addendum right there that we could sign tonight, and then tomorrow their money is hard and we move towards closing. But I guess there's some notice provisions that prohibit us from signing that tonight. So this additional 14 days is not being requested from the buyer, it's being requested from the board.
Because we're a public entity and we-
Right. I understand.
-need to be really concerned about things like that.
But I'm saying, so we're out of, we're out of extensions. The extension we're asking for is, you know, is, we're asking them, hey, guys, can we please have an extension so we can notice this properly and then proceed forward?
I would like to say that if, I will go with the amendment, but it needs to be for the appropriate, the traditional amount of notice, of public notice, not tacked on to a 7:00 a.m. meeting that doesn't meet the typical notice requirement. If we do that, then I'm open to discussing this again.
Okay. Even though that opens us up to more risk for more findings, for lack of a better word, it opens us up as the district for the opportunity for the buyer to find which, in speaking with some of your staff today, CNN was, there is potential to find other things.
More findings, change of mind, I mean, it's 14 days blanket due diligence. We're extending that blanket due diligence to whatever date y'all decide, they can terminate for any reason, whether it's findings, change of mind, find a different property they want to buy, they don't have to have a reason. Correct, John?
Yeah, no, that's correct. I think the benefit here is that we do have a number that they will absolutely move forward on, and I'm hopeful that they will stick by that for the 14 days to allow us to get our procedures and publication handled properly. And I think that can be sold to them pretty easily. Hey, we are very interested in this amendment that you're discussing, and we just need to have it properly published and have the correct meeting. And I think that's how we sell it to them. And if we get to the meeting and we go, we don't want to do it, we're not going to do it, just let you, you can buy it at 2.5, or you can terminate, then the cards are, you still have the cards. I mean, by giving this extension, we're not releasing any of the cards, right? Now, if you were going to sign and have the ability to sign the addendum reducing the sales price by 500 and immediately locking them in today, then I would say do that because then you hold all the cards, as long as you're okay with that price reduction. But it even sounds to me like you might not be okay with it. And so my, long and short of mine is, I would sign the amendment for whatever time period you need it for. If it's 14 days, we can modify the one that the buyer actually signed because they've already agreed to a 10-day, based on what our communication was to them today. So they signed off on a 10-day extension. If we need to go back and modify that to a 14, I don't see that being a problem. And we can likely get a signature from the buyer tomorrow. And then that would give us time to put it on, and then we can come back and have this discussion as it's properly set and noticed with as much flavor and information as you'd like us to provide on this, on this deal, to determine if you want to move forward with the contract at the reduced price.
I'm Chair.
Yes.
I'm in agreement with the 14-day versus the 10. I want us to make sure that we're doing it right. I don't want us to undercut ourselves. I want us to be completely transparent with the public. And this is the first, again, this is the first one that we're doing. This board, we need to do it right.
All right. Thank you, Reverend Cummings. All right. Dr. James, can you remind me, when you did your amended motion, did you put a timeframe minute or you just?
I didn't, but I can specify.
All right. Would you please?
And I think, I think what was requested was 15 days, which would take us to the Wednesday after the board meeting two weeks from now, so that then proper signatures can be done, right?
Right. 14 calendar days from May 28th, which is what's actually on here. What's actually on the one that the buyer signed for Mr. McGraw today was 10 days from May 28th. 14 days from May 28th would put us at June 11th.
Okay.
So that, a board meeting on June 10th would be able to be properly noticed if that's the board's desire.
Okay.
Can we get, if that's the way the board chooses to go with the 14 days and we modify that document, can we have authority for?
The Chair to sign it?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what we're, to sign it as a conclusion. So I guess technically then we don't need a motion on the table because we don't need a motion for her to sign the amendment.
Correct.
But there is, there is obviously a motion on the table. It didn't get a second. It only got, it only got a motion by Dr. Campbell, the motion that's on the agenda tonight, which is 26.1, or GUC 26.1.
Right. You made an amended motion.
Correct. That did get a second. But what I'm saying is I-
I seconded it.
I know. What I'm saying is I don't believe we actually need the formality of a vote for that amendment, seeing as the Chair has the authority to sign without the board vote.
Okay. Yes, Dr. Campbell.
And I understand what we're asking for just for that extension. However, what we have before us also includes the purchase price of $2 million. So as long as we are not having her vote on that part of it, and we have open discussion-
I would be more comfortable with the board not voting on anything right now.
Thank you.
But the board giving consensus for approval of a second amendment, which allows an extension of the period by 14 days past March 28th.
Yeah, that's what I'm making-
The board gives that and gives consensus for the board chair authority to sign, then Mr. McGraw and I will do that as we've done with minor edits for, for other agreements in the past.
And then G26.1 dies.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Dies for lack of second.
Okay. Yep.
Is that, I think that concludes the Chair.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw. Thank you, Mr. Wiegens. We sure do appreciate you taking time to come this evening and explain some of the pros and cons of what we have to do. So thank you both.
Thank you.
And Mr. McGraw, thank you for your conversations over the weekend and even on Labor Day, or I'm sorry, Memorial Day yesterday.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. You were, you had noticed, noticed to the grindstone at your office as well, so.
You have to. You have to. In terms of getting this signed, I do want to get this revised amendment signed. So do you, Chair Conrad, want to come by my office and sign tomorrow morning?
I can do that for you.
Does that work for you?
Okay.
Okay. If that's the case, I'll have it ready by 9:30 or 10 o'clock coming at your leisure, and then we will circulate it over to the buyer and hopefully have a locked-up extension by 1 o'clock tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll see you in the morning.
All right. Very good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Board. We're going to go into meeting reminders. There's a special board meeting scheduled for June 5th, 2025 at 7:00 a.m. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for June 5th, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. And the next school board meeting scheduled for June 10th, 2025, school board meeting at 5:30 p.m. We'll now go into board comments and concerns. Ms. Gonzalez?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Gullett?
Yes, thank you. I'll be brief, Board. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I think it's important to always start an end with students. So tonight we kicked off our meeting with the Fordham Early Learning Academy, and they really, those second graders and this first second grade class were just phenomenal. Last week, we had, some of us had the pleasure of participating and hearing their talents, and so I want to thank them. Board, I want to thank you for your support when we had this conversation, and Ms. Beck reminded us last week at the show that Early Learning Academy started with 12 students. And I know there was a lot of concern in the community about what's this academy and what are we trying to accomplish, and now with hundreds of students and one of the best kept secrets in town, it is a model for what early learning should look like and helps to support early learning in all of our schools. So I want to thank you for your support of that. I want to congratulate our graduates again. We're right in the middle of graduation season, and except for tonight, I think we have one every night this week, and looking forward to celebrating our graduates. I also want to say a public thank you to my superintendent student advisory group. We met in person just a week ago, and I'll be putting that in my last weekly wrap-up this week, but what a tremendous opportunity it is to spend time with students, hear their feedback. You hear board with your school board representatives, the voice and the advocacy they have is just remarkable, and I've just been impressed, and I thank them all for their diversity of thinking and how we can continue to better serve and help every student succeed. Lastly, I just want to thank our employees who support our students, and I say employees, I didn't just say teachers, teachers of course included, but all of our employees that work so hard to support our students, and thank them for just another productive year for putting our students first. I think that's always the most important thing is, and I've said this so many times over the years, what's best for students is often the most difficult for adults, and I don't take that lightly, but having a student-first district is really important. I hope that continues. So thank you for allowing me to serve.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Attorney Powers.
As you heard me report, we had a truancy court again on Friday. We had a couple of board members who did choose to attend as well. It is continuing to go well. There is enforcement mechanisms strongly in place. There's been some media coverage of that specifically lately, and we are getting quite a bit of positive feedback on that front. We have also continued to see a number of successes, and we are able to voluntarily dismiss cases after students have spent a couple of months doing the right thing and consistently getting a school. And I want to emphasize that in some of these cases, we've had students that have missed 70, 80, or 90 school days out of 180 school days in a school year, who are now, four months ago, they started missing three or four days, and then, then three months ago it was one or two, and then for the last two months, they're down to not missing at all. And by that time, it's starting to become habit, and it's a positive habit that has formed. And you're seeing, we absolutely see the curve with the students' grades, which we have the report of there for the judge. Judge King has been wonderful on this. The judge monitors those grades. He monitors the discipline reports as well, which we provide to him, and he's able to see, and we're able to see, that as student attendance improves, student discipline issues decline, and student grades are higher. And that's been a very positive experience, and I'm appreciative that I'm able to continue to do a part in that. Our staff does a wonderful job. We have a number of people who support us who sit there in court just as long hours as I am. So I'm very appreciative of those folks as well. In addition, we recently had some federal court litigation that I've been involved in, and everything's gone well there. We had our last date in federal court today, and we should be awaiting some more orders this week, which I will further inform the board of when I have that knowledge. So last thing I'd like to say is there is a special graduate from North Marion High School, Angela Powers, who will be graduating tomorrow evening, and that's my daughter, and I'm very proud of her, and she is doing wonderfully, and I appreciate and very much thank all of her teachers and mentors that have been with her through Madison Street, all the way up through North Marion. And I'm very, very pleased with the education she's received. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Dr. James?
Thank you. I'll start with graduations. We, last week had Hillcrest and then Bellevue High School on Saturday morning, and it was a beautiful morning for graduation, and I really look forward to an opportunity for the board as a whole to discuss a way to approach graduations in a more unique fashion in the future so that we can not have graduations at the same time. It's really important to our community, and I look forward to that conversation. I'm looking forward to our visits of the new schools, Board, this Thursday. We are visiting the two new elementary schools and taking a tour to see their status and where they are, and I'm really looking forward to seeing that. I just want to make mention, Board, that tonight we did reopen C20.1. However, that is only for the 2024-2025 school year central office staffing plan. So we just need to ensure that when we go to discuss the central office staffing plan for 25-26, either that change that we've now recommended and voted on will then remain an impact for 25-26 because we discussed a job description with those changes that would presumably be in use in 25-26. So I wanted to make that observation, Board, and to Dr. Brewer and staff to ensure that whatever needs to happen there happens. We had members from Lake Worth Middle School here tonight, and as they were making comment, I did write down some notes for my comments tonight. I have always been an advocate that our principal changes occur before voluntary transfer opens. I have maintained that for as long as I have been in public education, even from the time I was a teacher. People work for people. That is evident by the heartwarming messages shared by Mr. Jacob's staff tonight. And people have hesitation when they don't know who they're going to work for. That is a natural, normal occurrence. And if we did moves prior to transfer window, then people could work for people. But we don't do that. We have never done that. That is not the way of work. And I would love to be a part of a district that transitions our initial moves to occur prior to voluntary transfer, so that people can transfer in or out of schools where they will have a leader they want to or want not to work for. And I would love to see us get there. It is important for me that people have leaders that they respect and want to work for, and I do feel confident that Lake Worth Middle School will gain the attention of some really awesome leaders. We've had leaders leave the district and go work in other places that may very well want to come back. And so I just, I really, I'm hopeful and positive thinking that we're going to get a great leader to fill the seat at Lake Worth Middle School as well. I want to just make note, I think that it is going to be incredibly important as we transition, Dr. Gullett's last meeting is tonight, and as we kind of transition our work as a board, that we continue to strengthen our standard operating procedures and reporting structures because we have a lot of individuals who hold the keys to castles, and they are so good at their job, but if they are not at work, maybe they're on vacation, maybe they're called out sick, but if they're not at work, the work of this district should not go on pause because they're not at work. And so I want to continue to see this district strengthen our reporting structures and the way that we are communicating so that we can ensure that the work can continue regardless of people's presence at work. And lastly, I know that we're going to have a work session next Thursday to further discuss the budget and the central office staffing plan. the budget and the central office staffing plan. I just want to go on record and say that I am incredibly concerned that we may be approaching a period of time where we are going to have to cut positions that impact people. And it will occur after school has already gotten out. I am not a fan of that approach. And I am disheartened that it is now that we are discussing this. I think that there's a lot of factors that play into that and how we are this late in the game. And I'm not looking to place blame on anyone, but I want to just share my concern and my pause and my hope that we will be able to create a solution where we are not impacting people and can mitigate it as best as possible. And I'm looking forward to that conversation. Lastly, ending with a positive, I am looking forward to the livestock pavilion the next few nights as we celebrate our graduates, shaking hands and celebrating as our students take on their next steps in journey. And so with that, I will finish my comments for the night. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. James. Reverend Cummings.
Thank you, ma'am chair. We did start, thank you, Dr. Gullett, for reminding us about the great start that we had this meeting with tonight with Fordham Early Learning. We know that a few years ago, that that was a new initiative for us was getting Fordham up and going. And we can start seeing, tonight, we saw some of the fruit of our labor and the labor of Ms. Beck and her staff. So, those kids, they're amazing. And so, we're just looking forward to Fordham being even more and doing even more in what they're doing. Last week, I had the opportunity to go to truancy court. And I saw some stuff, heard some stuff. And it was, the courtroom was packed. The courtroom was packed, packed. And I'm glad to see that we're taking truancy seriously because we know that the truancy attendance affects the students, affects the schools as a whole, but it affects the success of that student. I heard various reasons on why some of these kids are going. And I've always said that if the kid is, if there's a little kid, that's the parent's responsibility. That's not the kid's responsibility. That's the parent's responsibility. And as they get older, we know that as kids get older, kids start making their own decisions and start doing different things contrary to their parents. And that's the parent, that's the kid's responsibility ultimately. I want to thank Judge King because he was able to decipher what was and what is. And he likened me to some of my days of doing judicial things where he just saw through the cloud of stuff that was being thrown his way. I'll say it that way. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And it was just, his parents, I don't want to say his parents, we know some people went to jail last week, correct. Some parents went to jail last week. Some kids went to DJJ last week. We need to do every, parents do everything you can to get those kids to school. We understand that people have different situations, but part of the resolve of that is to have communication with those schools. If you don't have the communication with the schools and you leave it up to people to think whatever it is going on at the house, it's going to be left up to us to think. And so, and then when you come to court, you have all these different reasons. And you can tell the ones that are legit and you can tell the ones that are not legit. And I appreciate Judge King for having that discernment as he made different rulings. Student attendance is a direct, direct relation to student outcomes. Direct, direct. And so, I'm looking forward to the day where I can go to truancy court and it not be so many students in there, so many parents in there. Because that was, to be honest with you, I was disheartened. That wasn't my first time going to truancy court, but the last time I went, it wasn't that many people there. It was packed on a Friday. And even some of the absences were all the way up to last week. How do you miss, how do you miss 90 days out of 180-day school year and expect to get some type of educational knowledge or get ahead? How? So, I don't want to be on that soapbox too long, but attendance is vital to student success. Attendance is vital to student success. One of the things I kept hearing in the court was the offering of summer school. Many of these kids that are truant are in need of summer school. And we have to be able to have a resource to be able to get them into summer school. Some of the ones that Mr. Powers was working on was trying to make sure that these kids that were truant were able to get summer school. And there were some schools that didn't offer summer school. We got to do, we got to do what we can because they've missed the whole year. They've missed 90 days out of the year. We got to have something for these kids. And for you to tell a kid that's truant or to tell parents who have truant kids that we're going to put them on virtual learning, that is crazy. That's crazy. Because if that was the case, they would have did it when they were home. So, that's not, to me, that's not even an option. But I kind of heard those things coming out. So, I want to look at this, I want to look at this seriously and figure out some ways that we can help these kids. The other thing, graduation, Hillcrest graduation is always so inspirational and motivational. It was truly, it always brings me to a point of, I don't want to say tears, but real reflection, nostalgia, nostalgia and reflection. And many of you know, I have a son that graduated from Hillcrest. And I always, I always think about the time that he was there and how good that school was to him and where he is now and how it was part of his plan for being, having a normal life as he can. So, I shout out to Ms. Manressa and to the staff at Hillcrest because you guys do a tremendous job over there. We all had the opportunity to go to Bellevue, Bellevue Saturday morning. I think, I think we got through there in about 55, 54 minutes. That was a good graduation, real good. And we were out of there. And not that we were rushing it, but it was hot. And the longer you stand on that stage, the hotter your toes get if you got on real shoes. So, we shout out to all of our graduates. I think we had 393, I kept hearing two different numbers. I heard 371, I heard 390, whatever it was, it was close to 400 kids that graduated from Bellevue. I'm tracking, we're tracking all these kids, the number of kids. We, again, we do have graduations tomorrow, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And congratulations, Mr. Powers. I know how you feel to have a graduate getting out. I'll share with you, if I haven't ever shared with you before, Cummings have a certain rule called the 1890 rule. So, the 1890 rule is after they turn 18, they got 90 days to figure it out. School, job, military, something. But that 1890 rule has been working so far for me, so far for me. And finally, my final comments is to Superintendent Gullett, Dr. Gullett. In 2020, you came on, you applied for the superintendent's position here in Marion County. You came in, you did a tremendous job. As you can hear, people in the community thought, think very highly of you and the job that you've done. I'm sure you didn't accomplish all of the things that you want to accomplish, but we appreciate you being our first appointed superintendent. And God speed in the next chapters that you're going to write because I'm sure you're not writing a chapter. You're going to be writing chapters. And we appreciate everything that you've done for Marion County Public School System. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Board Member Thrower.
Thank you. Well, since we've talked a little bit about truancy so far tonight, I will report in that the word is now out in the community. And I certainly couldn't be happier. Summer school does occur at the Arnett House. I'm proud of the fact that most students, by the time they hit truancy court, it is clear that they need a lot of help and a lot of support. And I'm proud of the fact that there are more students that are being adjudicated to Arnett House than to the Juvenile Detention Center. That being said, there's summer school in the detention center too, and attendance is usually 100%. So, you'll probably, you know, do what you need to do and get what you need to know so you can get into your quote-unquote "right grade." Fort King Middle School is having, is having summer school this year. And what, the reason why I'm mentioning that is because they have room for students because they have the fewest number of eighth graders that still need units than they've ever had. So, that is just a testament to the work that's being done by that team over there. I spent a lot of time at the courthouse this week, and let me explain. On Thursday, it was an evening, it was for the We the People, the Constitution competition in the mock congressional hearings. And that is one of the most amazing curriculums that we have. It's available in elementary, middle, and high right now because things, so many things that really fostered face-to-face interaction fell by the wayside during the COVID years. The program is being rebuilt. We're up to five elementary schools. Thank you, Oak Crest, Maplewood, Ward Highlands, South Ocala, and College Park. Three of those five schools are in my district, shocker, for participating. And we really want to increase that number of schools for next year. It is just amazing. And the line was very long waiting to be screened to come into the courthouse. And the reason why it was so long is because there were so many parents. And so, I didn't mind waiting one little bit for that to begin. It was a, it was a great night. And then the very next morning, I was back at the courthouse for truancy court. And Board Member, Chair Vice Chair Cummings was absolutely right, another packed house. But I just wanted to share that, you know, my hat is, and I know all of our hats are off to all of the school attendance teams that are working so hard to increase attendance. They are seeing some results now. And it's just a terrific example of the excellent outcomes for kids that happen when district staff and school staff work together, you know, on behalf of students. You begin to see that improvement and it's accelerating. And I'm happy to keep beating the drum and leading the charge on attendance. I just believe it is so foundational, you know, to all the work that we do. And especially in elementary and middle school, and Vice Chair Cummings spoke to this, it really is the parent or whoever is the adult responsible for that child that has just got to step it up. And we're always ready to help. Please remember, community, the truancy court is the final stop after incredible effort, time, and all of our collective tax dollars have been spent, and I'll say wasted in many ways, trying to prevent that final stop from happening, you know, before finally dropping the hammer. And it's sad. But for some, the carrot is the stick. And even Judge King, you know, he's so empathetic. He gives multiple chances. And it's like, oh, you know, he even shortens sentences, you know, and lets them get out early and go back and just show me, you know, that you can, that you're, this is going to improve. And, you know, he's raised five kids too. He has a kid in our system right now in our public schools. And he hates having to do it, but he will. And families are finally getting the message that we aren't playing anymore. And this is just my opinion, you know, all children deserve the best opportunities we can provide. And they have to be at school regularly to benefit from all the opportunities we have available, not to mention it's the law. And we are just finally completely enforcing it, including Learn Fair. So, I look forward to a day very soon when the courtroom is a lot emptier because kids are in school and getting the benefit of the fantastic educations and opportunities that under Dr. Gullett's leadership for almost the past five years has put into place all of the pathways, all of the pipelines, all of the community partnerships that are right there next to us, you know, cheering these kids on. We're, it's going to be another, as we begin to accelerate, there's going to be more years that'll go by. And before we even see the results that we're able, that we're just beginning to see now. And so, it is a great time to be a member of the Marion County School Board. I know I'll continue to say that till the day I step off the dais. I wanted to quickly thank Ward Highlands Elementary School Secretary, Ms. Lanna, for another perfect audit. It's probably number 463, I don't know, but she just seems to get it done every year. And Ward Highlands has a lot of kids, very high ESE population. You know, there's some money that flows through there and a lot of auditing that has to be done. So, congratulations to you and congratulations to everyone that is working so hard for those perfect audits at the school level. Those are really the beginning of the whole auditing process, of which we have like, I don't know, 35 of them maybe. Onto just a couple other things. I really would like to get a work session item, Chair agendized, to talk about Osceola Middle and Fesidin. Both of them are on the National Register of Historic Places. We know our budget is always tight and just getting tighter. You know, if we're going to have these gems of schools, then we do need to be looking at as many funding streams as we possibly can find. I think it's just been proven over and over that the appetite's certainly there in the community. Nobody wants to see either of these schools close at the, at the community level. So, can we please, Chair?
Yes, I was waiting, waiting to let you finish. I just wanted to let you know that Ms. Usher and I have been in conversation. She has, you know, jumped in and joined our team at a critical time. And so, she is working on getting some information together. So, Board Member Thrower, just know that that is not forgotten. I do have a note on that. And so, I will meet with Ms. Usher again and we'll see. I don't have a date for you right now, but, but we are discussing it. So, I'll get back to you on that.
Okay. Thank you so much. I really welcome that conversation. Hopefully, everyone else will too. And then the last thing I'll say is that I just feel like as a board member, when, you know, our two primary functions and responsibilities are policy and finance, that, you know, we're still waiting for a state budget. You know, Memorial Day is over. I'm sure Board Member Campbell will update us on when session is actually going to meet. It's been extended till June 6th. Well, that's fastly approaching, June 3rd. So, that's 30th. Oh, June 30th. Okay. Well, that is quickly approaching. That is a couple days before, one day before our fiscal year begins. We're shooting in the dark. And it makes it really, really hard to plan at the local level of, for people, for positions, for programs, all of it. And anything that can be done to continue to make that as clear as possible, that the longer we delay, the less chance we have of achieving the tremendous results moving forward that we all know we need and we want and we're working so hard to accomplish. We just have to have a budget sooner than later so we know what we're working with. So, that is the last thing that I have, other than go Fordham Foxes. You were awesome. That's it.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower. Dr. Campbell.
Thank you. My apologies. It is actually a concurrent resolution for June 6th is whenever they are extending session through. I was reading that they're not going to be required to be in Tallahassee this week. And so, that's what messed me up because that's through May 30th. But they will be there next week. No official announcement has been made confirming the exact return date. So, that's the information on that. I have several things I wanted to mention this evening. I know we kind of already addressed them, but I do want to thank again the Lake Weir Middle Team folks for coming this evening. They did reference multiple times to this board, kind of saying the changes we're making. And so, I just want to ensure that everyone out there understands that the changes in administration that are happening throughout the district have not been driven by this full board. Some of the changes coming are for the right people, but the timing is quite challenging on some of them. Three principal moves represent three of the four principals who've been piloting site-based budgeting. That concerns me. Lake Weir High School also will now have their third principal in three years. Those are unfortunate timings that we are experiencing with some of these moves. The folks this evening were representing just one campus who has, is being impacted and they're not happy with the communication or transparency. But while they represent only one campus, there are many other employees on many other campuses who share the same concerns about how the decisions were made, who appears to have been orchestrating some of the changes even before we had an interim superintendent named, and how these changes have been communicated. Please, employees understand, I share your concerns. We already addressed some perfect audits. I'm going to mention them all again, even though you mentioned a few. Marion Technical College, Ocala Springs, South Ocala Elementary, Stanton Weersdale, and Ward Highlands. Congratulations to those school teams. I know that we had one school's audit that was less than perfect significantly. And I believe additional information is coming to us about that. In the consent agenda this evening, item 16.16 was for RevTrack. And so, that is our online credit card processing system that we use. I want for the good of the order and for families to be aware that what we approve this evening is that the district is absorbing roughly $100,000 in credit card processing fees for families so that we're not passing those costs on to families for field trips and school dances and things like that. RevTrack is our processor for specific district fees. And it's not to be confused with our athletic game ticket processor or the processor for Marion after-school programs because they might operate a little bit differently. But for RevTrack and anything that is a required fee for your child who might be participating in those school-related activities such as field trip, school dances, and more, we are encumbering those credit card fees. So, we approve that this evening. We already mentioned graduation at Bellevue. I did have I did have a graduate attorney Powers. And so, all the feels and all the things that you can imagine, you're going to be feeling it tomorrow. Been there. I know I'm a little biased because I did have a graduate there, but it is one of the most efficient graduations that we have in the district. It inevitably never rains at 8:00 a.m. on the Saturday before Memorial Day. And so, for whatever reason, Bellevue goes off without a hitch year after year after year. So, kudos to that team for making that happen. As Ms. Thrower was mentioning about We the People, I'm going to congratulate South Ocala Elementary for their three-peat. Yes, you had three schools in your district, but South Ocala and mine has now won We the People for three years in a row. I'm just grateful that we had five elementary schools participating this year because the first year that we judged, I think it was only two schools. And we've continued to add a school every year. And there were some really solid rock star teams, and it was really tough to judge those students who did such a fine job. Buddy Oswald does a wonderful job and continues to advocate for We the People. He even recommended to bring it to middle schools and high schools. And as I've talked to some school teams, I believe we've had in the past that maybe an elective of law studies or something like that that uses the We the People curriculum at the middle and high school level. Highly recommend us considering doing something like that because it is such an effective program where the students are actually this year in a real courtroom and actually deliberating in the courtroom. And it was, it was a lot of fun for them, lots of photos taken. Also, wanted to congratulate South Ocala again. I know I mentioned them already, but they had a successful first year as an International Baccalaureate Primary Years Program candidate school. And so, they're still a candidate school, but they have done a wonderful job incorporating all that IB in the early years. And so, I look forward to hopefully being able to do something similar in our elementary schools that might be feeders into some of our other programs. We had a work session this past week with our mentoring programs, and I really am looking forward to what's next from those discussions. It just reminded me as we were talking that I completed another year of mentoring for Take Stock in Children. I actually went by last week and pulled her out of her classroom because she had finished her test and was going to be sitting there for the next hour with nothing to do because she had already finished her test. And so, she was grateful that I came by and spent some time with her. So, that was, that was really great. Unfortunately, this evening with the meeting going as long as it has, we have missed some baccalaurates as well as the mesbies. So, my hope is that the sooner we can coordinate year-end events for 2026, the better so we can all get those on our calendar and as much as possible to not have them overlap next year in any capacity so the board can take part in as many of those items as possible. I hope, I really hope we can. Board, I wanted to address one thing that we talked about in the work session that I brought up, which was the CEP membership question. I have gotten confirmation that our annual renewal actually will be up in December. And Dr. James alluded to the renewal date versus the mid-year date. And so, our annual renewal will actually be up in December. So, the invoice that I inadvertently received is our mid-year invoice. But the total membership for the CEP that is paid by Marion Technical College for Marion County Public Schools is $10,000 for the year. So, I think if we want to have a conversation about that, we certainly need to in advance of that December renewal date. And if we wanted to change our membership level, it would be time for us to have a conversation soon. Finally, last thing I was going to mention also is to thank you, Dr. Gullett, for your leadership and your expertise and for being the right person at the right time. You were only here a few months before I was elected. So, we've been here alongside each other just about this whole time. I'm grateful for all the changes that have been made for the better, even when change is hard for adults. As long as we keep our vision of helping every student succeed, which is a vision you helped us develop, our community will be impacted for generations, and you have a mark on that. So, thank you. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Board Member Thrower wants a second term.
I just have to admit something, and I know it's just because I really wanted Ward Highlands to participate in the We the People curriculum if they're able to, you know, make that happen. But it was, actually Saddlewood was the fifth school and it wasn't Ward Highlands. So, I stand myself corrected before someone else does because I'm sure I'll hear from someone. So, Ward Highlands, you're in my heart to be We the People participants, and congratulations, Saddlewood, for your participation.
Heather B. Tesh.
A two out of five. That's pretty good. And congratulations on the win in your district.
Thank you.
Go South Ocala.
Great, great. I just want to start with, from the beginning of our meeting, I really enjoyed the presentation from our students. Their graduate, second grade graduation program was super sweet and memorable and meaningful. And as a former primary teacher, just emotional. I was just so proud of them. They got up and spoke and got up in front of a big group of people. And so, just great work that's going on at Fordham, and I'm grateful for that program. I also want to say I was really grateful, we only had three, we had three speakers from Lake Weir Middle tonight, but we, there was a whole crew of people that showed up. And to me, that's exciting when we have teachers that are whooped. You know what it's like at the end of the school year. They are whooped. And they showed up here to speak on how excited and proud they are of the leadership at their school and how impactful it's been. So, I just want to give a shout out to the staff members that were here from Lake Weir Middle today. I sure did appreciate you taking time to come here this evening. And I also appreciated all of the comments that you had to share. So, thank you for that. Your voice has been heard and what you contribute is valuable. And so, thank you for bringing all those concerns and celebrations forward. So, it was just great to see you all. Graduations, we have two behind, two under our belt and a few more to go. Just looking forward to it. Families want to remind you, if you've been to a graduation in the last couple of years, the traffic is crazy. So, just leave early, try to get there early. We look forward to seeing you there and shaking hands with your students. So, we are excited to celebrate. On that, the Bellevue graduation is very, very efficient. It's beautiful and efficient. But I wanted to share that one of my favorite things about the Bellevue graduation is their ambassadors that meet us in the parking lot. And it's early in the morning, folks. We are there early and they are, students are there before we are, dressed in their, got a little t-shirt, their ambassador t-shirt. They know where everybody is supposed to go and what we're supposed to do. And so, every year, I just enjoy those brief, informative conversations with those students that are helping organize and prepare for that ceremony. So, I just wanted to give a shout out to those students who work extra hard on a weekend, bright and early. We sure do appreciate them. I think that is the majority. Or I do also want to say a thank you to Judge King, Attorney Powers. This is a little funny on my family, so I know y'all are tired of hearing me say, I've been in education for 30 years. My husband is forever telling me, I don't want to talk about school, stop talking about school. But yesterday, he was like, you know, you guys are all over the radio. It's all over the radio that parents have gone to jail. Truancy Court has really hit the news. And so, as sad as it is, if you're sitting from this seat or even the seat on the other side, it is exciting that attendance has made the headlines because we all know, all of us involved in any way, shape, or form in education know that if the students are not there, they can't learn. Our test scores are not going to increase. You know, it affects our teachers, our staff, the morale of the school, not just the student. You know, it's just, it's cyclical. It affects everyone. So, just exciting that we've had, we've got some great traction on this and the importance of showing up to school, you know, every day is being, being shared and talked about. So, I'm excited about that part of it. And lastly, I want to end on a positive note. Dr. Gullett, we're just so grateful for your leadership. I haven't been on the board for all five years that you will have here, but I have enjoyed working with you. I appreciate your insight and your expertise, your willingness to talk one-on-one and share your thoughts as we're moving forward. And so, we just had a small token for you this evening, but your impact has been large. And so, just thank you. And I know that you will be around for, you know, a little bit longer, but this is your last public-facing meeting, and just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Board, with that, that wraps up our work for this evening. And if there's no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Y'all in a hurry? Dr. Campbell and Board Member Thrower, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0, and this motion is adjourned at 8:09. Thank you.